There's Bernie.
I thought you was gonna say, "Please do."
This, uh, this session of Halltown City Council Meeting is now in order. The invocation of Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Kim Reese.
Thank you. Would you all please stand? Okay, Father, please, please guide this council to make honest decisions that, that may affect Halltown City. Allow us the ability to follow your will and not our own. Guide over the citizens of Halltown City and also the military and keep them safe and out of harms way. In your name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Father, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll now have a National Night Out proclamation presented to Mr. Pete Plugis. Uh, Mr. Plugis, will you meet me down at the... Day? What is that?
Podium.
Podium. I was gonna try to call it, trying to call it the dais. Over here. Where they can pick up the, the words here. Whereas the 23rd National, Annual National Night Out will take place on August 1st, 2006, and whereas National Night Out, America's Night Out Against Crime, was introduced by the National Association of Town Watch in an effort to heighten awareness and strengthen participation in local anti-crime efforts. And whereas last year's National Night Out involved citizens, law enforcement agencies, civic groups, businesses, neighborhood organizations, and local officials from over 10,000 communities in all 50 states, U.S. territories, Canadian cities, and military bases worldwide, totaling over 34 million people participating in National Night Out in 2005. And whereas it is essential that all citizens of Halltown City be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and the impact that our residents and neighborhoods can have on reducing crime in our community, and whereas police-community partnerships such as Crime Watch Associations, Neighborhood Safety Awareness, and Cooperation are important themes of the National Night Out program, now therefore I, William Lanford, Mayor of City of Halltown City, Texas, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, August 1st, 2006, as National Night Out in Halltown City, and urge all citizens to join the City of Halltown City in supporting the 23rd Annual National Night Out. Mr. Plugis?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Would you like to say a few words?
Mayor and councilmembers, members present, I understand the night before this, you're gonna have the kickoff. We want everybody to come to your kickoff, enjoy it, but go away hungry, because on the first, we're gonna have it, 4,000 Ivy Street, we will have our AARP National Night Out at 4,000 Ivy, at John and Joanne Williams' house. There'll be cookout information. We'll have police, fire department, we believe the rescue will be there, and it'll be given information out that you can all use for crime prevention and health. That's all I have to say about that. I wish you all would come April 1st. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Plugis. And now, making presentation for beautification award, Denise Ford.
Mayor, would you step down here, please?
Okay.
He's not in trouble. I am. I got here and found out I have to make a speech. And I wanna thank Mr. Powsky, is that his name? I had to borrow his glasses. Why don't you go over here where everybody can see y'all? Y'all need to stand where everybody can see this. We're real proud of it. For seventeen of the last eighteen years, the Halltown City Beautification Board has entered competition for the Governor's Community Achievement Award for Keep Texas Beautiful. To win the award, which is accompanied by generous landscape grant from Tech dot, the board must coordinate programs in seven different categories: leadership, education, public awareness, cleanup, waste management, beautification, and law enforcement. With your support, council, we have utilized the KTB program as a guideline for making Halltown City a better place environmentally for everyone. We have had some success, having won the Governor's Award three times. This year, although not eligible to win the award, we submitted an application and received recognition for sustained excellence, a score of ninety points and above for the last three years running. We also received a gold certificate for fulfilling the reporting requirements. On behalf of the board, please accept our gratitude for contending and supporting us, and all of us have the interest of the community at heart. Our mission is to carry out the development and execution of beautification, cleanliness, litter prevention, and revitalization programs within the city, thereby improving the quality of life and affecting economic development objectives. Also tonight, you will be, council, given the third edition of our Christmas ornament. And this year, it has the Mockingbird, which is our state bird, and it's especially designed for the beautification board. Mayor, I hope you'll accept this on behalf of the beautification board.
Love it. Love it. Thank you.
Thank you for your, thank you all for your support. We appreciate it.
Thank you for that presentation. That was Bernie Blocker and Wayne Flower. They were up there with us, and this is such a wonderful, wonderful board. They, uh, I'm, I'm glad they got it for sustained excellence, because that's exactly what they have done over the years. Uh, and Fran Burns on the staff works diligently with that group as well, and appreciate her. And speaking of Fran, uh, here she is with some announcements.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I need to make people aware that spraying has continued here in Halltown City. A second mosquito pool collected from Halltown City has tested positive for West Nile virus. This pool was collected from a, a location near the intersection of Webster and Beulie Streets. City crews, crews sprayed all of Zone 2 on Thursday of last week. Residents are asked to stay back from the spray unit at least 100 feet if following in a vehicle, stay indoors while spraying occurs, keep doors and windows closed, and remain indoors, pets included, for 30 minutes after the spraying has been completed. Those with questions concerning the city's spraying program or related information should call Public Works at 817-834-9036. And if you'd like to, to view a map of the spray zones, you can visit the Halltown City website at www.halltowncitytx.com, or if you'd like a copy, a hard copy of that, call City Hall, and we can provide that for you. And there was a question about symptoms of West Nile in pre-council this evening. Um, most people who are affected with West Nile virus will not have any type of illness. It's estimated that 20% of the people who become infected will develop West Nile fever with mild symptoms, including fever, headache, and body aches, occasionally with a skin rash on the trunk of the body, and swollen lymph glands. Um, the symptoms of severe infection include headache, high fever, neck stiffness, stupor, disorientation, tremors, convulsions, muscle weakness, and paralysis. But it's estimated that only one person in 150 persons that are even infected with the virus show these types of symptoms. Best rule of thumb is to protect yourself when you're going outdoors. Spray yourself with insecticide off or something, and cover your skin with long sleeves or long pants, and avoid getting bitten by mosquitoes. As a reminder to residents, too, we're still under watering restrictions, and in order to conserve water, residents and businesses must refrain from irrigating their landscapes from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. every day. Broadcast irrigation during the highest temperatures of the day is against a new city ordinance, ordinance, and is a waste of water. Hand watering during these times, and watering by soaker hoses, is acceptable. And there was some confusion about watering. Um, the only restrictions we have at this time are, are not to water between 10:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. We suggest to people that if they'd like to help conserve water, that they use the five-day watering plan. And there's information about that on our website, but that, right at this point, is not a mandatory thing. I think some residents were confused and have been calling City Hall. Um, just please don't water between 10:00 and 6:00. Summer nights at the Senior Center continue. Halltown Center is staying open later each weekday in July and August, and seniors can stay at the center, play table games, shoot pool, use the computers, and eat an evening meal. The center's also hosting a variety of activities at these, at these times. Reservations for evening meals may be made by calling the center at 817-834-8021, and the price per meal is $2. Also, the Senior Center will be having a diabetes overview this Wednesday at 11:00 a.m. That's June, July the 28th. And following Wednesday, August 3rd, they will have a reverse mortgage workshop, which will begin at 5:00 p.m. Both of these programs are free and open to everyone. Uh, our National Night Out kickoff, which was mentioned earlier, will take place on July 29th, that is Saturday, July 29th, from 3:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the Recreation Center in Broadway Park. Um, activities include all kinds of things that can involve the families, good clean family fun. Uh, people can come and get involved and learn about crime prevention. As a reminder, residents are invited to bring documents for shredding as they learn about protecting themselves from identity theft. The event is free and will also include a silent auction. National Night Out is the following Tuesday, August 1st. It's always the first Tuesday of August throughout the, the country. Um, the Police Department encourages neighborhood crime watch groups to meet on that night and show support in working with the department to reduce crime in their own neighborhoods. And I have been told that they are soliciting volunteers for the dunking booth for Saturday night, and council, you're specifically, specifically and personally invited to take part in this. So please call the organizers if you'd like to do that. I know it's gonna be hot.
Is there a price for the balls to throw 'em?
Sorry?
Is there a price for the balls to throw at the dunking booth?
You know, there should be. That should be pretty high, too.
From what I understand, it is supposed to be a fundraiser.
Yes, right, right. I think three for $5 is a good price.
Are they soliciting, are they soliciting?
Tom, will you buy some?
Yeah. Are they soliciting our help to throw the balls or to be, uh, part of the...
I think it's the other way around.
I think, I think if you wanna throw something at your, if you wanna dunk a fellow council member, it probably costs you doubles.
Never mind.
That should apply for staff as well, is that correct?
I think, probably, yeah.
Thank you, Fran.
You're welcome. Um, okay, the Tour de Taste, Tour de Taste, presented by ArtsNet, features, um, food from 50 different local restaurants, and will take place from 5:30 to 9:00 p.m. Thursday, August 3rd at the Northeast Mall. Advance sale tickets are $25, and they're $30 at the door. You can call for advance sale at, uh, the ArtsNet at 817-858-9531, and, uh, it sounds like a really fun event to me. Um, and the last thing I have is, um, wanted to share with you all some good news about the parks. Um, last time we met, or you guys met, George Fowler, the Parks Director, came and talked about some equipment that was going to be purchased. Uh, the equipment has been purchased, and some of it has been installed in Little Fossil and North Park, and they're showing pictures of the equipment on the screen. I think what you're looking at right now is the equipment at, uh, Little Fossil. That piece, and this piece, which is called Mobius, it's one of the very first ones installed in this area, that work has been complete and, um, should be open for use within the next day or two. And then at North Park, there's a nice new, um, grouping of equipment that, um, has been installed and should be available for use in the next day or two. So, just wanted to share that with you. And the next, next, um, equipment should be installed at Broadway Park within the next couple of weeks. So, thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Fran. Appreciate that. Okay. Then, uh, next item on the agenda is the, uh, monthly financial report for May. Mr. Joel Welch, Financial Director, will be presenting that. Excuse me, June.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. Uh, as is customary, enclosed in your packet is the monthly financial report for the fiscal year through June 30th, which of course represents 75% of the budget year completed. At this time of the year, it becomes a little bit easier to talk in terms about year end. You know, most of the time when I come out and talk, it's about progress through the year. But, uh, from here on, I think I'll be talking just a little bit more about the year end. And tonight, I also intend to talk a little bit about the weather, but I'm gonna talk about the budget first. But, uh, as far as the funds go, the general fund is, is, is in a, a good state again. I've been very fortunate. I've been having to come up, make reports like this for two and a half years, and I've been able to talk about the, the strength and the stability of the general fund, and that continues. Property taxes are still coming in at the rate that we expect them. Sales taxes are running about 10.9% ahead of last year's pace, which puts them solidly ahead of the budget. Uh, the other revenues are, are pretty much on track. Uh, the, the, on the expenditure side, the department heads are being faithful stewards, and I, I believe that the general fund is going to finish the fiscal year in a very good condition. I think that the, uh, that we will add to the fund balance, and that the fund balance percentage could possibly is, be as hi, high as 25, 26%. I think we have 26 and a half is the current staff estimate. That'll change a little bit one way or the other over the next few months, but, uh, a, a fund balance of 25% is not out of the question in the general fund. That's a, a very good situation. Uh, the, the Water and Sewer Fund sales are, are progressing about where we expected them to be. Water sales are slightly ahead of the budget projection for this time, but still well within the, the, the range that we expect by this point. Uh, wastewater fees are, are again, they're in line with where we expected them to be. And, uh, the, the expenditures, there are no big surprises in the expenditures. We're, we're seeing what we expected to see. And in the Water and Sewer Fund, I think that our fund balance percentage is going to be remarkable in relation to what it was in 2004, when I joined the city and we had a, a liquidity percentage of, uh, below 10%. I think that the Water and Sewer Fund is gonna be in a much better state, also well above the 20% target that we would like to see. Uh, I mentioned I was gonna talk about the weather a little bit. Uh, I haven't talked about rainfall in a few months. After the first three months of, of this calendar year, and the rainfall that we experienced, and, and them being more seasonally normal, I got tired of coming up and saying the rainfall has returned to a seasonal norm. Well, as soon as I stopped talking about a seasonal norm, we promptly went off the seasonal norm. And at this point, I, I can say that, uh, if, even if we don't get any rain the rest of July, we're about two and a half inches ahead of where we were as of July 31st of last year. If we continue that pace, we'll finish the year about two and a half inches ahead of last year. That's good, but it's not that good. If we maintain that pace, last year and this year combined will be about 41 and a half inches of rain. We will not have had two consecutive years of such dry weather since 1909, 1910. So, we're going back beyond the drought of the 50s, beyond the Dust Bowl, to get into some dry weather, if, if, if the weather conditions and the patterns that we're seeing right now don't change. So, you know, that does have a, that is something we bear in mind very carefully when we're watching, the, the water and wastewater patterns, and, and what's gonna happen with Fort Worth Water. We did attend a meeting with Fort Worth Water on Thursday of last week, and got the final information from Fort Worth Water. And when we get ready to, to meet the staff and the council for the workshops, and we get to the Water and Sewer Park, I'll give you a more full briefing of what the impact of what Fort Worth Water is doing that is going to be upon the citizens of Halltown City, and I'll give you a, a lot of detail on that. I'm just not gonna dive into it tonight. Uh, also, I wanna mention on taxes, uh, tomorrow is the due date for receiving the certified rolls from the Tarrant Appraisal District. About three weeks ago, they had a major, uh, power malfunction at the complex where the appraisal district is located. A transformer blew out. They lost power in, in, in part of that business park for all of the businesses in that particular section, and the appraisal district fell well behind. I talked with their Director of Administration this morning. He indicated that by working all day for the past three Saturdays, that they have largely caught up. There's an outside shot that will get our values tomorrow. It is more likely that we will get them around Wednesday or Thursday, so therefore they'll be one or two days late. So, we'll be able to go over those in depth and have a chance to give you a full briefing on Saturday at your, at your budget workshop. So, I, I really was hoping to be able to talk about what happened to the values tonight, but I'm not able to do that, but we'll be able to do that on Saturday. The, uh, the Drainage Fund, I'm going back to my report again. Uh, the revenues, as I mentioned in the executive summary, they've settled in to a predictable level, and, uh, so we, we see about $106,000 a month, and that has held true for, for well over a year now, so I think it's a pretty reliable number. Uh, the expenditures are, are moving along appropriately. Uh, they're a little bit below projections at this point, and we do think that they will be adding some, uh, amount to the fund balance at the end of the year. Uh, the Crime District, of course, is benefiting from sales taxes being much stronger than last year. And even though we will be drawing down on the fund balance a bit this year in the Crime District, it won't be nearly as much as we thought. In fact, I'm expecting it to be a fairly nominal amount of money, just a few thousand dollars out of the fund balance, which means that over the next 90 days, that could change, and we could actually wind up with nothing coming out of it. But I think it's operating very, very close to break even. The Economic Development Fund is, uh, I'm, I'm projecting that it is going to, uh, to, uh, add a, a good deal of money, a considerable amount of money to the fund balance, even though the overall fund balance is gonna go down because we spent some of the, the bond money. The part that is unobligated is gonna increase. So, even though the fund balance is gonna go down, the available amount for, for all business purposes is gonna go up in the, in the fiscal year. Uh, in the area of the Investment Report, we are, uh, the, the portfolio is going down in terms of total amount on hand. That is to be expected this time of year, as we begin to draw off the, the property tax money that was collected earlier in the year. Uh, the, uh, portfolio yield continues to move up. It moved up very slightly. We're at, uh, 4.37%. Uh, last month, we were at 4.35%. We're chasing the benchmark. The benchmark is at 4.81%, but, uh, we're still running into the problem that the, uh, the yield curve is inverted, and that money invested for 90 days earns more interest than money invested for two years. So, we're still, we're still working our way through that. But, uh, otherwise, the portfolio is, is performing well. It's, it's well within expectations. Uh, in the area of the supplemental data, uh, the thing I wanna mention there is that the municipal court information was not updated for this monthly report. Uh, the, the municipal court administrator, uh, committed maternity, and will be back in probably another four weeks. And, uh, she had not left instructions for her supervisor on how to prepare that monthly report. So, I didn't get it in time to put it in this report, but we will play catch-up next month, and we'll have a, an up-to-date report for you there. That's it.
Thank, thank you, Joel. Any, uh, any questions for, for Joel?
Just a quick, it looks like our earliest opportunity to start moving that portfolio yield up is August 2007, according to the report. That's when some of those significant long-term, uh, investments become due?
I'm looking very much forward to that, sir.
All right. Good deal.
I can tell you, I, I was looking in the, in the rates today, and I can buy a two-year bullet agency for 5.5%. And these things that are gonna be maturing have been earning around 2.75, so I will double the yield when we can finally get a chance to reinvest, and that's gonna help the portfolio considerably.
August 2007.
August, well, no, August of 2006 is when we're gonna be able to do some.
Some of it, okay. Cause in the report, it was 2007. I was wondering.
Okay, I'm sorry. That's a misprint. There's, we're gonna be able to do that in 2006.
Excellent. Good to hear.
Thank you. Any, any other questions for, uh, Joel? If not, uh, will entertain a motion to approve or, or not? Mr. Cabano?
Uh, that's to approve the monthly financial reports for June, Mayor.
And Mr. Holcomb?
That's first, second.
Okay, been moved and seconded to, uh, approve the, um, financial report for June. Uh, please register your vote. And that is unanimous. Next on the agenda is the Capital Improvement Status Report. Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Before I get to the CIP, in listening to Joel, it reminded me of, of an announcement that we did miss in the announcements. At the workshop, uh, the council decided, set some, uh, workshop dates for their proposed budget for 2006 and '07. Uh, they'll be having their first one on Sa, this Saturday at 8 o'clock at the Central Fire Station, and then the second one, um, scheduled for Tuesday, August 1st. So, um, and that'll be, I don't know, 6:37, I guess, Tuesday? I guess it'll be whatever time I decide. I guess we didn't pick a time, but, uh, anyway, it'll be Tuesday, uh, uh, August 1st. But the first one will be this Saturday at the fire station. Um, now to the CIP. Uh, in the, uh, Parish and Solona, uh, project, a lot of the residents around there saw pictures and stuff that Fran had of playground equipment, cause there's playground equipment included in the Parish and Solona projects, and I'm sure they're wondering when their playground equipment's gonna be getting there. Well, the, the project's commencing next week. Uh, we're working with the contractor, trying to escalate the playground equipment to get there sooner, but hopefully the, uh, project will be done, uh, should be able to be done in a couple of months. The county's giving them an extremely long time to do that, so, uh, I'm not even gonna, I didn't even put that in the report. I'm not gonna tell you what it is. It's just ridiculously long, but hopefully they'll, they'll get it done. Browning and Dunson Traffic Signal, we finally got all the materials in, uh, mainly the poles, the light poles. It takes an extremely long time to get, about 12 weeks to get. We've got everything in, uh, plus a switch box, so we'll be starting to, uh, get that stuff, uh, installed, and hopefully the, the signal will be operational in September. You'll probably start seeing flashing lights sometime next month. The overlay project for this year, you've got an agenda item on tonight's agenda, to award a contract to reliable paving for about $863,000 to, uh, put two-inch overlay on a, uh, well, actually to mill and then put overlay on a litany of streets. I'm not gonna go into that list now. It's on our, it's in the report that's there, and it's on the website as well, but, um, gosh, it looks to be about 15 or 20 streets. Um, and again, that, uh, project will start next month, should be finished by November. There's also on your, uh, agenda tonight, consideration of a reconstruction project. This will reconstruct Vicki, Glenhaven, Beulie, and Harris. This'll be, uh, this'll include water mains and, uh, sewer, uh, storm drains. Uh, utilities on Beulie will not be, uh, done, cause they were recently installed, um, oh, no, excuse me, cause of lack of roadway. That's why they won't be done. Um, uh, no, they were, let's see, I'm can't even remember. The Beulie stuff was recently installed. The stuff on Harris, there's a lack of roadway, so there won't be anything done on, on Harris. And, uh, but it will be a full reconstruct on all those streets. That, that project's probably gonna take 10 months, so that'll be a long, uh, a long process, about $2.1 million, uh, project. And hopefully that'll start next month. That's on your agenda, in the consent agenda, award a contract to believe, stabil and win. Um, on the Big Fossil Creek Consortium Study, we're still waiting on the cog. Don't have any movement on that. Um, uh, try to get movement, try to get something out of the cog, and, uh, it's just still working, and we continue to push, but, um, it's, um, a long time coming. Um, talking about pushing with the Skyline Mobile Home Swan Street Project, this thing is still not finished. The contractors are just kind of, uh, been non-responsive in completing some of the punch list items, so, uh, we've got our attorneys involved now. So, uh, we'll, uh, see what they can work out. we'll see what they can work out. Midway Waterline Project is, that commenced in May, and it finished a month early, finished a couple of weeks ago. That was a waterline project, replaced the waterline from Belknap to Carson. Phase two will be done next fiscal year, and that takes it from Carson to Menace. The library is still progressing in the design phase. We've had a meeting last week. It's very exciting to see some of the work that's been going on there. We'll be showing something probably to the board, to the library board here in the next thirty to sixty days. I'll finish up with the animal shelter repair project. We've kind of hit a snag with that, and that some of the strippers and sealants that we've needed to put on the floor, we were hoping to do it in phases by taking some of the animals out and sealing part of the floor while some of the animals were still in there, and now we're just going to have to vacate the entire shelter for a period of time while we strip and seal the floor. We've worked arrangements out with other, with our neighbors that have animal shelters to move our animals there, and we'll be doing that shortly. So hopefully, it'll be a short downtime to where the center won't be functional, but we'll still, our officers will still be out on the street functioning. But that's just a small little glitch with that project. That concludes my report. I'll take any questions.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Any questions for Mr. Mayor on the Capital Improvements Report? Thank you, sir. Next on the agenda is the ICSC Annual Conference Report, and I believe you were going to present that, too.
Sure, yes. Mayor, back in late May, Mayor Broten Bransom and I, and our, and the EDC's consultant, Mr. Kent Flynn, went to Vegas for a, for the International Council of Shopping Centers Annual Conference. This is a, it's a conference that like I've never seen before. It's forty-something thousand people, all trying to develop properties and businesses and whatnot. It's extremely expansive. It's the first time I've been, it's the first time Mayor Broten Bransom has been, and it was a overwhelming, is, I think is fair, statement. It was from Sunday, the 21st through the 20th, through Wednesday, the 24th, and the Monday and Tuesday there were just incredibly demanding on one's feet and legs and back and mouth. Some people were able to keep up talking, others weren't. But I'm not implying anything. The comments that we got from the developers, we talked with a litany of developers, and a lot of the comments that came back, they're wanting to come here, especially when 820's done. I think there'll be people knocking the door down when 820 is at least started, or there's some focus, focus there, instead of just the carrot being dangled by a text dot like it has been for the last few years. But the, it's a sad thing to say, but unfortunately, our reputation precedes us. And the, I can't tell you how many times I've had to address with develop, with these developers out there about what, you know, are we doing anything differently? Have we changed anything? Are we going to be doing something? Or are we doing anything to change the negative attitude towards the city, or the image that the city's got? And that's been something we've been dealing with for the last couple of years, and we'll continue to deal with. It's, it's a, it's, it's a, like I was talking to the mayor earlier today, I equate it to like a big ship changing directions. It's going one direction, it can't change directions right away. It's going to take, take a slow turn, and it's, it's a, it's a challenge to do that, and it's, but the developers need to see something from us as far as something continual. I think they like what they see, and, but it's, there's some other challenges that need to be overcome between the income levels that we have here, or the access issues, or, you know, we don't have a whole lot of property. I think the Belknap revitalization has been exciting to some of these folks, and it's exciting to a lot of people around here, so that's certainly part of it. 820's going to play a role in it. I think the city is uniquely positioned to take advantage of what's going to be going on in downtown Fort Worth, of how we, of what's going on just Fort Worth in general. So it's, it's a good time to be here, and trying to sell that to the folks in Vegas is, that started in May. This will take several trips. This will take many meetings, many, many, much effort to get some results out of this. It's not going to take one, one shot's not going to do it. It's going to take many shots. But it's, it was an eye-opening experience. I didn't know quite what to expect when I got there, but it was very enlightening. I don't know if Diane wants to add anything to that, or...
Of course, since I took the exception to the, some of them didn't have problems not talking. I think also something that was really exciting was even on the plane trip out there, was an opportunity to talk to the landlords of some of our empty boxes here, or the actual owners, and that was really exciting because they couldn't escape, you know, easily. So got some real good input. Is it okay to say which big box?
That's fine, that's fine.
The old Kmart building, the landlord of the old Kmart building was actually sitting across the plane aisle from me, and it was really great to hear his input on Haltum City and the things we needed to do. But in defense, I'd like to say that the council and EDC are going in the direction of a lot of the things that were mentioned to us in Las Vegas. They were things that we had already recognized through trial and error, or through just talking with other people, and then to hear it again up there. We are known, we are recognized. It was also interesting to hear when you would say, well, what about this property? They'd say, well, yeah, we've looked at that, but if you'll do this, maybe we'll come back and look at it again. So it was...
It was a nice confirmation of the things that they suggested that they wanted us to do, we'd already started, through the, through the council, had already started those efforts, so it was a nice confirmation. And the plane flight she was talking about, I mean, she had a captive audience for three hours with those guys.
They did not have an easy escape, because there were only two restrooms back there, and you could only send one at a time.
She had a captive audience.
The other thing I'd like to say is that we were not the only city officials there. Most every city in our area had at least two council members and a city manager. Some had police chiefs, fire chiefs, finance directors. We are really in some stiff competition for some of these businesses down here. Even some of the really small towns to the north had quite a contingent out there, and they were, they were loaded, they were ready, they had it all together. So I agree with Tom. I think it's going to take several trips, but the really great thing is we have a stack of cards this big, and I keep calling them. Eventually, they're going to take my phone call.
Yeah, and they've called us, too. I mean, it's been good.
And we have, we've had some people, the Kmart guy, he called us back more than once.
Well, thank you very much for that report. Any questions from the participants?
Ready to go?
Appreciate that.
Anybody want to go next year?
Well, be thinking about that. I think the good news here is, is that we, we've got a pretty good idea of what we need to do, and now then we get to do it. There's some hard work and some decision-making packages for not only this council, not only for the EDC, but for the citizens of Haltum City. We all have some, some things we can do, and so that's, that's the good news. Now then, all we have to do is do it. That's, moving on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda is considered to be self-explanatory, and will be enacted by the council with one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items. Approval of the consent agenda authorizes the city manager to implement each item in accordance with staff or board recommendations. And for your information, we have pulled off the consent agenda items five and eight. So the consent agenda now consists of items four, six, and seven. With that said, entertain a motion. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion. We approve the consent agenda as presented.
And Mr. Sutton?
That'll be for a second.
Mr. Hutchinson? For a third? Okay, all right. It's been moved to second and thirded to adapt the consent agenda consisting of items four, six, and seven. Any discussion before we vote? Please register your vote, and that is unanimous. The next item on the agenda is the Resolution Consideration Interaction Regarding the Area Metropolitan Ambulance Authority Interlocal Cooperative Agreement. Mr. Mayor, you want to, or, okay, Chief, Chief McIntyre?
Mayor, Council, we have before you the agreement you just spoke of. I won't try to restate that again. With us tonight, we have the Executive Director of the Area Metropolitan Ambulance Authority with us, and if you have any questions of him, he'll try to answer those questions for you. Mr. Jack Eads.
Mr. Eads, appreciate you making yourself available. Now, in our pre-meeting, we had some discussion, and I think that's what led to our decision to bring, bring that discussion, continue that discussion out here, and I think there was some, some concern about lack of bidding process. You explained that there are three major players in this arena in the United States, and we've dealt locally, or you've dealt locally, with two of them, and had unsatisfactory results. And I believe Chief McIntyre alluded to the fact that since the board, your board has taken back over control, that we've had a number of improvements, and that's recognized. Now then, the concern is, going forward, since you've asked us to permanently allow your authority to, to run the ambulance system, that there was some concern about the lack of outside bids and being able to set the market. And some of the explanations you gave were certainly quite, I think, complex, but would appreciate if you'd just kind of go over on as high a level as possible to just kind of give some, some rough brushes to what, what we're up against, what you're up against, and what the decision we have before us tonight.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. The Board of Directors, which is a six-member board of directors of the ambulance authority, four of which are appointed by the city of Fort Worth, one is elected by the suburban cities. Byron Black serves in that capacity and is your representative on the ambulance authority board, and Dr. Griswell, our medical director, is the sixth member of the board. The board felt that, given the fact that there are only three potential bidders in the country that can run a system that, of the type that MedStar is, and that we have had two of those bidders, potential bidders, deliver less than acceptable service, leaving us with one potential bidder, that now was not the time to require the system to go out for bid. It's a very expensive process. The last time we did it, it cost the authority in excess of $200,000 to prepare the RFP and go through the process of awarding a bid. For the bidders themselves, they spend a lot more money than that in preparing their proposals and their bids, so they want to know that if you go through that process, there's a likelihood that you're going to award a bid. I think that the Board of Directors felt that, given our current price and our current performance, that it was, if we were to go out for bid, we, we might not see an improvement. Right now, MedStar enjoys the lowest cost per transport and the lowest cost per unit hour of any high-performance EMS system in the country. That's documented in a recent study that was produced by the Coalition of Advanced Emergency Medical Systems, and be happy to share that with you. But given our current position and our previous problems with two of the potential bidders, they felt that it wasn't a good time to go out for bid. Of course, in this agreement, that you, the authority would retain the right to go out for bid, but it would make the determination, based upon an annual review of our performance, whether or not that was the best thing to do. We have said in this agreement that each year, either through a report from the authority, or through a report from an external consultant or entity, that we would, we would evaluate our financial performance, our operational performance, and our clinical performance, and report that to all fourteen member cities. And then, we think that that will give you the information to, to, to help us determine whether or not we should go out for bid. The thought is, is that if, if those reports and audits come back positive, and we are competitive in areas of finance, in areas of clinical performance, in operational performance, then the thought would be, why go through the expense of, of a competitive bid if it's been shown that we are indeed competitive and still of very good value and offer very good service? So we will do that annually in this agreement and report back to you and all our member cities of our performance. And I think if, if the opposite is true, that we're not cost-competitive, or we're not providing good patient care, or we're not providing good operational performance, then the decision would be made to place the system back out to bid and see if we can get better results from a private contractor. So that's, I think, I'm speaking for the board here, because they are making this recommendation to you, not, not myself as the executive director, that each of the member cities adopt this amendment and allow the authority to continue to serve as the operator until such time it's determined that there, the better option would be to have a private contractor.
Thank you, Mr. Eads. I'm going to, we've got a, the school board just lit up here. I'm going to jump out here and just ask a kind of a leading question, but it just appears obvious to me, and maybe you can confirm or deny this, that apparently, running an ambulance service is not an overly attractive in, in financial way, or we wouldn't, we'd have more than three providers in the entire United States. And I'd just like for you to kind of answer me there, and is that true or not, and, and, and give me some of, some of the economic background.
That's true. Two of the three potential bidders are publicly-held corporations, and I think it's fair to say that generally, the marketplace expects greater returns than, than those companies can, can deliver out of EMS. The margins in emergency medical services are not nearly as attractive as they would be for those, for people who are investing in those corporations where they might put their dollar elsewhere. That's been our experience. And the third corporation that, that owns it is a not-for-profit. It's based out of Tyler, Texas, and it's owned by East Texas Medical System in Tyler. But again, they, they take a slightly different approach, in that they don't expect the returns that the two publicly-held corporations do. But nonetheless, the way they, they make a profit in, in our environment is to hold their costs down extremely low, and what I think the board has seen is that in certain instances, while that's good from the purchasing standpoint, from the operations standpoint, to hold those costs down, your, your biggest costs are the compensation that you pay, your paramedics and your EMT and your other staff, the, your fleet that you have to maintain and replace, and some other capital-intensive costs, and those types of investments can go unmet, if you will, or those expenditures can go unmet if you're trying to hold your, your costs down. So I think the board also takes comfort in the fact that with a public entity operating the system, we can see where investments are being made into the system. And in this year, in this past year that we've operated it, the profit, the monies we would have paid towards the contractor's profit margin have gone back into the system. We've completely replaced the ambulance fleet, purchased thirty-eight new ambulances, and we've made extensive improvements in our information infrastructure to help improve our response time performance. We've increased the pay scales of our paramedics and EMTs so we can remain competitive. We've increased the pay scales of our paramedics and EMTs so we can remain competitive in the marketplace. And so we're... The fact that a public entity can now make those decisions, I think, has given the board a feeling that that works well and serves the member cities and our citizens well.
Thank you, Mr. Eads. I was not able to catch everything that, like I say, this thing exploded, so I'm just going to start down on this end. Ms. Branson.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank you. You addressed a concern that I had back there when you came out here over how you will become an organization that will take bids again, how you're going to recognize at what point you need to do that. And that was my question, but I guess you kind of thought about it and picked up on that. That I had some concern about how you knew when you needed to start taking bids again. So thank you for addressing that out here. I appreciate that. And that may have helped some others in that area, too.
Ms. Reese.
Thank you. One of the questions I have is, we've had the plan where we've had our citizens able to pay the $55 or whatever it is annually.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that still being enacted? Is that being done away with? Where do we stand there?
No, we're... You can join and become a MedStar member. We've renamed the program this year, our Star Saver Program, but it's the same program. It's the MedStar Membership Program. And you can join at any time. Any resident within any of our 14-member cities can join. It's $55 per year, per household. And I was just telling one of the gentlemen here, he asked me to send him an application, and I'll do that tomorrow. But yes, it's still very much alive, and we encourage people to take advantage of it because it covers your, any emergency transport in full, and it covers non-emergency transportation if there's any kind of third-party coverage that's approved. If you have third-party insurance and a claim is filed and it's approved, then that bill is covered in full. And if you don't have any type of insurance or third-party coverage, then you receive a 40% discount off your normal charges for a non-emergency bill. So it's quite a value for residents and citizens, and it's a... We view it as a safety net and something that helps protect folks against our, the high cost of our service because it is expensive. And most people don't plan to use an ambulance, and it catches them by surprise, and this is a great way for them to protect against that occurrence.
Okay. And the other one, other concern I have, and there's been lots of talk throughout, is the response time going to be in the report? And then, who assesses this report? Who grades you guys? I mean, do you send them to us, the citizens?
The reports will go to all the member cities and each council member of every member city, and the city administrators or managers of those cities. Of course, the Board of Directors of the ambulance authority will receive a copy of the report as well. The way the interlocal agreement amendment is worded is that the Board of Directors of the ambulance authority would make the determination whether to go out for bid or whether to allow the authority to continue to run it, but it would be based on that annual evaluation that we would send to you and provide to the board.
Who does the annual?
Well, in one year, it'll... It's an odd-even type of a situation in that the first year, this upcoming year, that will be prepared by the ambulance authority. And then the next year, we will hire an independent entity, someone who is qualified in emergency medical services to perform that kind of an evaluation and do that type of a review, and so that there's an independent third party that views it and reports that to you. And then in the following year, it'll go back to the authority. The thought there was, is that trying to keep the expense of having that done every single year by an independent third party and hold that cost down.
Is that all you have, Ms. Reese? And just for clarification, you said you can sign up anytime, that's anytime other than right after you dial 911?
Yes, sir.
You can't sign up on the way.
Needs to be in effect before you pick up the phone.
Okay. Just want to make that clear. All right, Mr. Hudson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jack, also address, too, I know that, and I appreciate the fact that you're going to continue to have audits as well as send us the reports of those audits, but it's not just the money, too. Remember, you're servicing 14 major cities around here, and you addressed something in there that really struck a note with me, and that's the personnel. I didn't know that we had a shortage in EMTs and so on and so forth. Could you address that for the citizens of Halton City, too?
Yes, sir. Particularly in the area of paramedics, it is a very, very tight competitive marketplace. You'll see this around the country. It's a national problem. And so we have... When we took over the system from our contractor, they were 23 primary paramedics short of being fully staffed. And we have to have one primary paramedic on every single ambulance, and if we don't have that, we can't put the ambulance out on the road. And that, in turn, really affects our response time performance. And we've hired, in this past year, the ambulance authority has, 47 paramedics. We have an extensive, however, and fairly stringent academy that they have to go through in order to make it to what we call a primary status, and not all of those 47 have made it through to primary status. But that's a problem we're still struggling with. We're, with all the folks that we have in training right now, we're still going to be between six and seven primaries short of being fully staffed. And just last week, at the Authority's Board of, Board Meeting, they approved a program whereby we will begin to offer relocation assistance to folks coming from outside the state of Texas. We're going to begin a national campaign to advertise and get the word out that we need paramedics. And we're going to... It's very common in the industry to see both sign-on bonuses and relocation assistance, and we're going to have to do that as well to remain competitive. But I hope that answers your question, and that's the workplace we're in.
Well, I'm concerned about response time just as well as you are, and I'm sure the citizens are. We've all been concerned about that. I'm sure that had something to do with the other two organizations having low ratings, in the board's opinion. But that also has to, with the kind of service and the kind of care that the individual citizens get, if they're late and they get lousy care, obviously, then that's going to reflect in the report, too. It's not just about dollars and cents. It's about the quality of service, too, is what I'm addressing, sir.
You're exactly right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Mr. Cabano.
I think most of my questions answered. I just have one quick one. Are you going to keep the same service levels that was in the contract before? Is that what your target goals are going to be?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That, those are our target goals, is to keep the same response time requirements that the contractor had. Now, I will want to be clear on this. When we had a private contractor, if they failed to meet the response time requirements, they were subject to losing their contract, and they were also subject to financial penalties, fines for being late on a call. While we're using the same standards, for example, nine-minute, 90% of the time on a priority-one call, we are not paying a penalty when we miss that. I mean, it'd be, the right hand would be paying the left hand, so we're not doing that. But we're still reporting to all the member cities what our response time performance is, and those still are our goals and targets.
Are we going to be getting that just annually? Are we going to be getting it, you know, a little quarterly report?
We provide to the city a monthly report on our response time performance and can give you any other kind of information you'd like to have. And then, the yearly report that I spoke of, and it's required in the amendment, will be far broader. It will include not only that, but financial performance and clinical performance that we're fortunate to have a very strong clinical component in the system and already have independent oversight there through the Emergency Physicians Advisory Board, which is a 14-member physician board that oversees the system from a clinical standpoint. And so they will have a chapter, if you will, in that report as well.
Okay. Thank you.
And Mr. Sutton.
Yeah, just real briefly. Diane basically addressed it, but there really will exist, since this will change the way that you bid, you won't be bidding, and that's a perpetual statute of the resolution. You will not, will we have any legal means, the 14-member cities, to ask you to do a bid? For instance, if the quality of one of the ambulance services improves, and we don't sense that you're being responsive to address, you know, considering those, will we have any recourse?
By all means, I mean, I think you've got a couple of avenues of recourse. One is certainly to make known to the board, and you're representative on the board, your desires.
Okay.
And tell them, we think you need to go out for bid.
Okay.
And, because they report to you.
Right.
And all the 14 cities. The other thing is that you have the ability to withdraw from the system. And if there, it's spelled out in the agreement, the notice that you have to give, and if you're not satisfied with our performance and our quality of care, you can withdraw and leave the system.
Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to say, first of all, my hat's off to you, working out at DFW and being a fireman, for being able to start up with administrative system to tackle this problem when you hire somebody normally to do it. And if you're going in, in the first year or two years, and after doing that initial startup, and able to go out and buy 30-something ambulances, my hat's off to you because I know the price of the box and the chassis, and those are very expensive.
You're right.
Units.
Yes, sir.
And I look forward to you taking control. I think you're going in the right direction. You said everything I wanted to hear, and it sounds very positive. And like Mr. Hutchinson, I, again, I want to say that the $55 upfront annually is the most bang-for-your-buck you can get. If you've got children to play outside, if you're elderly or you have elderly parents in this city, that's one of the best investments you can make. And secondly, working 24 or 48 hours, every paramedic that you get to move into Halton City, if I'm off those days, I will help them unload their furniture.
All right.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Be sure and write that down, Mr. Eads.
I wrote it down.
Any other questions of Mr. Eads? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Any further discussion before we entertain a motion to dispose? If not, okay, Mr. Hudson.
Thank you for the laborious answers and after the laborious questions, Jack. That's very commendable, standing up there and answering all our questions. After, it was supposed to be a consent agenda item. We were, but we had some very serious questions, and I appreciate you answering them. But in light of that, and in light of the responses, which were very good, I make a motion that we pass resolution R. 200601705, the amendment to the area metropolitan ambulance authority restated interlocal cooperative agreement.
And Mr. Clark. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ask for a second. It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution R. 2006071, 01705. Any further discussion before we take a vote? Please register your vote. And that is unanimous. Next item on the agenda is item number seven, consideration or action to award, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, number eight. I apologize. Item number eight is the next one on the agenda. This is a consideration or action regarding the Trans-Texas Corridor and realignment of the North Texas Route. Mr. Mayor, you want to lead us?
Sure. Mayor, Council, and citizens, the Trans-Texas Corridor has been a highly-publicized idea of TechDOT and the governor. It's a new highway system coming up from Laredo, more in San Antonio, and then kind of paralleling 35 and coming up through the Metroplex and going into Oklahoma. It's a corridor of about, it's about 1,200 feet wide. It's got lanes committed for trucks, lanes committed for cars. It's got freight lines. It's got utility easements all through the corridor. It's the idea is that everything's going to be transversing across Texas up this corridor. Now, for the trucks and the cars that are going to be driving it, it would be a toll highway, so I guess make it a turnpike, to a matter of speaking. As it approaches the Metroplex, just north of Hillsboro, the favored plan of the private contractor that's kind of taken this project on is to divert towards Dallas and go east of Dallas and virtually ignore Tarrant County. And it proceeds east of Dallas, kind of circling around Dallas, and then coming back to the west, kind of up through, up between Sherman and Denton, maybe going towards Gainesville or something like that. They've got 10 different routes, 10 or 12 different routes we're looking at, but that's their preferred route. The resolution you have before you tonight is to endorse a realignment of that route as it comes into the Metroplex. The Regional Transportation Council, which is the metropolitan planning organization of the area here that covers Dallas-Fort Worth, they favor a much different route. It's a route that comes up, again, up from Hillsboro, but it kind of follows due north and would connect basically to 360 in Arlington, or just south of Arlington, as it comes up, as it divides the two cities. It would come up there and then to meet a new loop that would go around the Dallas-Fort Worth Metroplex, be a new loop highway, so I guess it'd be outside of, be south of 20. On the north side, going east and west, it'd probably be parallel something along like 170 north of the Speedway, 161, the Bush Turnpike would probably play a factor into it because it's, because of its proximity to 360. But it's a favored proposal to the overall plan of the region. The region is, by 2025, Tarrant County's going to be as big, if not bigger, than Dallas County in 2025. And that, that route needs to, I'm not saying it doesn't need to go to Dallas, but it can ignore Tarrant County or anything to the west. So the resolution for you tonight, again, is to support the realignment of that corridor. There's a map at the back of the resolution that shows you where we're talking about. It's a red line route, and it's really just kind of expressing support for the red line route. There was a public hearing last Monday that some of us went to, that Mayor Lanford spoke at, expressing his concerns over it, and a lot of other people in the area expressed concerns. And there's other public meetings across the state. I think the last one in this area is going to be in Dallas on the 27th. But for anybody else that wants to go and learn more about it, they do have quite a bit of information for people that do want to know about it, and they've sort of got it on their website. I think it's keeptexasmoving.com if people are interested in learning more about it. They won't learn anything about the red route. They'll have to go to the COG to find that out, or to go to our website, and you can find some links towards it. But with that, I'll take any questions that you may have regarding this resolution.
Any questions for Mr. Beer? Mr. Sutton.
I guess I don't have a question, but I have some comments I'd like to make. Is this an appropriate time to make it?
Yes.
Okay. At the hearing, there's a lot of different sides to this issue. One of the sides is, is that, and you may hear this politically said, that this is a land grab for Texas. And certainly, that's one perspective. I think that the view that our mayor gave was a very good and balanced perspective on what's at stake here. I look back in history, and I see that the railroad came to Texas way back in the 1800s, and there were certain towns that decided to woo the railroad and get them to come in there, and it meant their financial future. And there are other towns that said, we don't want the railroad coming there, and it meant that they didn't progress, depending on what you call progress. And this is kind of a little bit like that idea that happened back then. We have the opportunity for some financial benefit to this community by the route that is proposed by the RTC, and that's what our mayor stood up and addressed, his support for it, and that's what this resolution goes and provides support for. There are other ideas expressed with this. It is going to be a private company. It's going to be toll roads. That's something that Texans, many of us Texans are very much against. The idea of toll roads, why can't we do it another way? But the reality of it is, is that there's very few other ideas about how do we deal with the congestion that we're daily experiencing here in the Dallas-Fort Worth Metroplex in a positive way that is realistic. So the reason why we're doing this resolution is to join with the other member cities So the reason why we're doing this resolution is to join with the other member cities in a way that provides financial benefit to this area of the Metroplex, and it won't leave Haltam City behind, and that's why I'm supporting this resolution tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Sutton. Any other comments from the DA's? Certainly, this is not a public hearing on this resolution, but I wanted to bring it off the consent agenda this evening, because there was, there has been some indications in the local paper and some other areas of some opposition to this, and so I wanted to give the public here tonight an opportunity to speak. If you've got an opinion one way or the other, or have some questions, certainly want to give you an opportunity to do that before we take a vote on the resolution. I certainly do support this. Not saying there's no other possible alternatives, there are always alternatives. Just am saying that one of the reasons I support this is that there's no current alternatives being discussed. There's either for the Trans-Texas thirty-five or no Trans-Texas thirty-five. That's the only current discussion being taking place, and, you know, you don't take too many trips down eight-twenty before you see doing nothing is not a real attractive alternative. So that's certainly where I come from. So, but I wanted to invite the public in case there was someone who had an opinion or wanted to, had some questions, could do that now. Anybody in the audience that has? Mr. Journay, would you come up and introduce yourself, sir?
My name is Bill Journay, forty-five, twenty-nine, Nadine, and I just have one question concerning this corridor. If, in fact, and indeed, that they're going to put this in here, why are you giving us an opportunity to say anything at all about it? Thank you.
Well, I'm not sure I understand the question, but I'll do the best I can, Mr. Journay. I invited the public to do what you just did, to speak on it, for, against, or just have a question. I offered everybody the chance to speak in case they had something they wanted to say or a question they wanted to ask, and you just asked a question, so that's why I did it. Any other speakers? If not, entertain a move to dispose. Ms. Holcomb.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve resolution R. 2006-018-01.
And Ms. Reese.
That would be for a second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution R. 2006-018-01 regarding the Trans-Texas Corridor realignment. Any further discussion? Please register your vote. And that is unanimous. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, item nine, is under public hearings, conduct a public hearing in consideration or application of Mr. Walter Ward regarding replat on Murray Avenue. And Mr. Plisca, would you like to tell us about this?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, citizens of Haltam City. This is the ninth plat of O six. It is a replat, hence the need for a public hearing. Tonight, we're conducting a public hearing in consideration and/or action on the application of Mr. Walter Ward, who is a surveyor for the final plat of lot fifteen R., Block Five, Cascade Heights Edition, being a replat of lots fifteen and sixteen of Block Five, containing approximately point nine-one-nine acres of land on the north side of Murray and locally known as forty-two oh five and forty-two oh nine Murray. The applicant is expanding the existing structure located at forty-two oh five Murray, which is on Lot sixteen. The building expansion would not meet the side setback requirements, therefore, the applicant must replats Lot fifteen and sixteen into one lot. This plat was recommended for approval to the city council by the Planning and Zoning Commission on the condition that the applicant provide landscaping along the front portion of the platted lot. The decision was made at the July eleventh, two thousand and six P&amp;Z meeting. Therefore, I formally submit the eleven-by-seventeen final plat and GIS information for your review.
Thanks, sir. Any questions of Mr. Plisca? If not, I'll...
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, thank you, James. Not, I'll open the public hearing. Any one from the audience wish to address this item?
Mayor, I'd like to introduce Mr. Vandergriff. He's the owner of the property.
Okay.
Thank you.
Please tell us your name and address, sir.
My name is Ernie Vandergriff. My address is four-two oh nine Murray Avenue. I just want to thank the city council for this opportunity, Mayor. We've been, we've had our business, our non-destructive testing lab in Haltam City since nineteen ninety-four, and have sought to grow in the area by utilizing some of the buildings available over in that complex. We've got to a point where without a replat, our growth is just not available for us. We are a non-destructive testing lab. We do testing for Bell Helicopter, the defense industry, and for, we're an exclusive lab for Halliburton. And so we would appreciate the opportunity to continue to grow in the area.
Thanks, sir. Any questions for Mr. Griffin? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Any other comments about this item? If not, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion to dispose. Whoa, Ms. Reese.
Thanks, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve P. zero-zero-nine dash zero-six.
Mr. Cabano.
That's for a second, Mayor.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the ordinance P. double-oh-nine-oh-six. Any further discussion? Please register your vote. And that is unanimous. Thank you. Next public hearing, item ten, regarding application regarding Heather Barcia of Dale Operating Company for a conditional use permit with site plan approval to allow for a proposed gas well site. James, you want to carry on about this?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, citizens of Haltam City. This is a public hearing for a zoning amendment. This is conditional use three-oh-six. It is to conduct a public hearing in consideration and/or action on the application of Ms. Heather Barcia of Dale Operating for a conditional use permit with site plan approval to allow for a proposed gas well in the PD MF Plan Development Multifamily District on Track One, Abstract eight-ninety-six of the J.N. King Survey, and Track Two C., Abstract six-eighty-two of the Alexander Hood Survey, located near the intersection of Huddleston and Joy Grace Road, containing three-point-one-eight acres, locally known as fifty-four-hundred Huddleston. This is a request for a conditional use permit with site plan approval for gas drilling and production on the above said site. The CUP is required by the city's zoning ordinance, since the proposed site is in a residential zoning district. The gas drilling and production site must meet all requirements of the city's gas drilling and production ordinance, as well as six-and-twenty-nine R. performance standards and section thirty-six conditional uses of the city's zoning ordinance. At the planning and zoning meeting on July the eleventh, two thousand and six, the commission voted six to one to approve the conditional use permit with site plan approval on Track One, Abstract eight-ninety-six, J.N. King Survey, and Track Two C., Abstract six-eighty-two of the Alexander Hood Survey, subject to the following conditions as spelled out by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Number one, Dale Operating Company is to escort all truck traffic at five miles per hour from the intersection of White Creek and Huddleston to the drill site and then back out again. You have an exhibit provided by Dale, which is indicating that. To include a twenty-four-hour gate guard during drilling, well fabrication, and any reworking of the well, and to follow Fort Worth's Gas Drilling Task Force recommendation on lighting, include location of lights on site plan, which they have, landscaping, and that landscape must blend in with the environment and must be installed within ninety days of well completion, and fencing, which must blend in with the environment and be installed within ninety days of well completion. Therefore, I formally submit the ordinance amending the planned development as well as the CUP, Exhibit A., which is the proposed site as provided by Dale Operating, GIS aerial of the well location, aerial showing the existing zoning districts. We included three copies of the Fort Worth Gas Drilling Task Force information that's discussed by the planning and zoning, and then, of course, the escort map for your review.
Thank you, Ms. Plisca. Any questions of, oh, Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. James, I have no problem with a five-mile-per-hour escort. What's the thinking behind that? What are we trying to accomplish?
They were, planning and zoning was concerned about going through the residential areas for children and elderly, and to restrict it in that area from where they cross White Creek on the other side of the tracks and then down Huddleston entering the well site. So they wanted to slow the traffic down, which they're willing to do anyway, and then have that traffic escorted to protect the safety of the residents.
So a vehicle bringing some equipment in that's a non-Dale corporate-type vehicle would be escorted so that they can't exceed what they don't know already is there?
Anything coming through there is probably going to be escorted, but anything going through there is probably going to be Dale Operating of any major size.
That's what I thought.
Yes, sir, because Huddleston dead ends at that point, so there shouldn't be any truck traffic, just your regular residential traffic for the area.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Ms. Branson.
Thank you. I know this is redundant for some, but would you explain a conditional use permit for those that are not familiar with it, how long it stays with the property, under what conditions it would not stay with the property, and that sort of thing?
I certainly will. When we put the gas well ordinance together, or the drilling portion as well, in the residential areas of the city, it requires a conditional use permit to even be granted before a well is applied for. It is allowed in an industrial use as a permitted use. With a conditional use permit, it is like a zoning amendment. It is attached to that particular district for that particular site in which the planning and zoning and council can place conditions on the use. These conditions may be performance standards, they may be landscaping standards, they may be any of the particular standards that are spelled out in the city's zoning ordinance.
And does this conditional use permit stay with the property for how long?
Yes, yes.
Forever and ever, or until the use changes?
In some cases, a conditional use permit can transfer with ownership.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Reese.
Okay, I'm just, I'm very lost. Where is this in regards to the school, Haltam High?
It is, it is way to the east of Haltam Road, and you should be able to see the outskirts of the parking lot from the aerial. If you'll look at the conditional use three-oh-six, the aerial there, you will see the ball, what appears to be ball fields and the area of the parking off of the high school. The well site itself is over eight-hundred feet from any residence or any structure.
Okay, is that it? Kim? Mr. Hutchinson.
Mr. Plisca, I noticed here it says that they're going to have an escort truck, all truck traffic, five miles, and I appreciate the fact that they're going to slow down going through the streets. Couple of questions I have about the streets itself. What if the equipment is so large it starts, it does damage to the street? Is the company willing to repair the streets coming in? And also, if they make any, if they make any divots in the property itself as they come in, are they going to create another street, and as they back out, are they going to make repairs too?
Great question, and I have my backup quarterback here, the city engineer. Okay, Mr. Bennett-Hall, thanks.
Thank you, Mayor, the council. As part of the gas ordinance, they have to post either a bond or a letter of credit, and the city is allowed to draw funds from either the bond or the letter of credit to make any of the corrections on the road or any other damages necessary. So from that aspect, the city will have the ability to draw funds to make any corrections to the road as necessary.
Well, I noticed that the, I mean, these are residential streets, and obviously, they're not made for incoming and outgoing heavy equipment, which will be what is required to drill this gas well. So I'm just concerned that the streets will be repaired at the same time.
They will be.
I mean, that's, we've already, as you can see from earlier ordinance as citizens, that we've got quite a big street repair program going on, and we want to make sure that the company is going to take care of that part, too.
I already have the letter of credit in hand.
Thank you.
So all that's taken care of.
Thank you.
Mr. Sutton.
This one's for James. Just a, I'm kind of wondering, one of the ways that this could have been addressed is by changing the zoning of the property, and that may have been something that was not available to do, or maybe it wasn't recommended, but do you have any comments on why that approach was not taken? Maybe it doesn't agree with our comprehensive land use plan, and that's why it wasn't approached. But just, do you have a few comments about that?
Certainly, the property itself is an old planned development multifamily. The old development was, I believe, it's Short Game Partners out of Houston. They were going to do apartments towards the high school, but this particular area would have been a three-park, eighteen-hole golf course. This area also is in the flood plain. It is really not prime property for development. If we were to pursue a zoning change, and it's such a large tract, we would have had to change quite a few acres, and the city wasn't ready to do that, or the developer itself wasn't ready to do it at this time. Hence the beauty of the conditional use permit. The conditional use permit is very specific. You could actually get a CUP for an office in an office park, basically, if you describe it correctly. So it is written into the ordinance that in residential areas, including multifamily, the next best step, other than rezoning, would be to make it a CUP. Right? Now, our other options, then, would have been to zone this industrial, and yes, so they would have become a permitted use, but that would not have been an option relevant to the comprehensive land use plan. Right? Yes, sir.
Ms. Branson.
Thank you, Mayor. I have some more questions, but they may be more from Mr. Dale or the owner of the property when that time comes, but I'll start, and you can tell me to wait if I need to.
Certainly.
First, I want to thank you all for telling us what kind of trees you plan on planting around there. That's refreshing to see that someone has actually listed the type of foliage they want to plant. But on the fencing, I know that part of this conditional use is not what was written in the ordinance. It's a different type of perimeter fencing around the actual well. And I'm going to presume that the fire chief and everyone has been briefed on that, and they're okay with us changing that?
Yes, the staff has looked at all of these changes and is in agreement with them, and I am going to defer the explanation of the fence to Mr. Dale of Dale Operating, because he sat on that task force.
Okay.
And he was the one that initiated the change the other night, and he will discuss the reasons why they went that direction.
Okay. And the other question I have is lights. Since this is the first well that we've had presented here in Haltam City, my source of reference is what I've read from Fort Worth and surrounding areas in the newspaper. And how, are these lights going to be, I should look at him, it'll be his turn later. Are these lights going to be disruptive to the residents around there? I understand the need for keeping it lit at night during the drilling process and the...
They shouldn't. Again, I'm going to defer to Dale on their presentation tonight. They will address that. But also, I was fairly close to the first well that was put in North Wartson Hills. I live fairly close to there.
Oh, okay.
And those lights didn't affect the neighbors. They come down, with the exception of the lights that outline the operating system itself. But the lights are to remain non-invasive, and there are facets in the ordinance as well that control lights in residential areas.
So they have the, I don't remember the correct name for the word, but the solid part on the back of the light that keeps the reflection from going back and directs it all?
Probably hooded or pointed down, correct.
Directs it all in.
Right.
Okay, well, I'll wait for their part of the presentation. It probably will answer any other questions I may have, and, or it may create some more. But one more, just so they'll have a heads up. Do they have any idea how long the drilling will, for the sake of conversation, let's ... suppose that they have actually done their seismographic studies, and they've determined that there's probably gas under here, and they want to go after it? Do we have any idea how long this traffic will be going on this road and how long they'll be drilling?
There's a certain timeframe for, right, for site preparation. And again, they'll present that.
Okay.
But I believe it is also based on how deep they're going and things of that nature. But I do want to point out, though, that the ordinance is specific. If we receive complaints about the lighting, they will need to do something about it.
Okay. And they're okay with that?
Yes.
I presume, okay. All right, I'll just wait for their presentation. Thanks.
Mr. Sutton?
Yeah, I, I think some of those lights are marker lights that are regulated by the FAA for air traffic in the area, and so, won't those be pointed up?
Yes, but the majority of the operating lights will be down.
The operating lights will be down.
Right.
Those will be the white lights, but I believe the red lights are the ones that are pointed up. And so, there are some lights that are pointed up, and those should not be visible from the ground, from what I understand.
They should be visible so that if a plane, you know, they need to have.
Right, they're, they're visible for the air traffic above.
Right.
From what I understand. The, the well that was at Loop Eight Twenty, I noticed that you couldn't see those, but when I, when we flew over, you could see them.
Mm-hmm. And so, they're, they're, they'll be very specific as far as the, their type of lights and, and the lights they use for the operating system.
Okay.
We're not going to steer any air traffic to Loop Eight Twenty or anything like that, are we? Okay, okay.
Now, any other question for staff?
Thank you.
Thank you, James, and Benny. Mr. Dale, is, would this be an appropriate time for your group to come up and make their presentation? Appreciate it. Could you please identify yourself and give us, give us your business address?
I'm Heather Barcia. I'm the manager of Regulatory Affairs for Dale Operating located at 6,001 Bridge Street. And most, most of the things, we've already addressed in this presentation, but I just wanted to show you in particular what our company is about. We've been in the oil and gas business for about twenty-six years. Throughout that timeframe, we've drilled three hundred and sixty wells, seventy of which have been horizontal. And about three years ago, we started focusing our, our leasing efforts in the Tarrant County area. And within that three-year timeframe, we've acquired twenty thousand leases from small and large mineral owners. Some of the large mineral owners, such as the city of Fort Worth, the city of Arlington, Bell and TXI, and then we've even gone and knocked on doors and leased individual homeowners. So, being in the urban development, you know, we, we've got main focuses. Safety, security, and quality of life are top priorities for our company. As we discussed, this particular location is just west of Denton Highway and north of Eight Twenty. To access this location, we will come down Denton Highway, where we will proceed west, down White Creek, and go south through Huddleston. At this intersection here, that is where they'll be intercepted by the escort cars and proceeded down Huddleston. This is an aerial view of the air, of, of the surrounding areas. What we have done is we've gone out to the location to show you the natural vegetation from each corner of our pad site. As you can see, it's a very wooded area. It's on very low elevation, and our ideal for urban, urbanized development is out of sight, out of mind. We are, your city of Fort, your city, Haltem City, requires a masonry wall in their ordinance, and we're asking you to take into consideration the city of Fort Worth revised ordinances. And the revised ordinances, which you received in your package, basically says that we've got to have a six-foot tall chain link fence that's coated in dark green or black. And then, there's also, we've got to provide a thirty percent canopy around the, around the site. This is an actual rendering of what we perceive the site to look like after the drilling and completions operations have ceased. This was also attached to your package. As you can see, it tells you the type of trees that we're going to be using, and then it also gives us a distance from the actual wellhead to the nearest structure, which is eight hundred and forty-three feet. Your city ordinances require six hundred feet. Some of the concerns when working with the residents of Fort Worth is noise associated with the drilling operations. And we've hired a firm out of LA who has come in and consulted on our drilling rigs and provided us several options to abate the sound. And basically, one of the things that they do is we come in and we build walls around the entire parameter of the site, and they extend from sixteen to thirty-two feet tall. And then, we also surround the substructure of the rig to the ground with blankets. And this site, I'd like to present to you, this is a local article on our company regarding the sound walls and the effectiveness it has.
A Fort Worth resident angry about deafening noise from those drilling rigs could soon get a pleasant and quiet surprise. Some energy companies are meeting new noise requirements by wrapping their rigs in blankets. Channel Eight's Jim Douglas joins us live now to show us how this is all done. Jim?
Well, John, the big boom in the Barnett Shale brought an equally loud boom and complaints about drilling noise. One solution, blankets, like the ones around the rig behind me. You've got to hear the difference to believe it. How'd you like to have this noisy neighbor round the clock for an entire month? This one isn't close to homes, but some are.
Twenty-four seven with all this noise right next to the house.
Fort Worth has about a dozen rigs like this working, but expect at least a thousand more gas wells to be drilled within city limits.
And that, and that number could be up in the two thousands, easily.
Okay.
And if the railroad commission changes there what they call their, their spacing rules, that could double.
What was the number one complaint that you heard from residents?
Noise.
So, Fort Worth ordered drillers to cut the noise, and at this site, you can really hear the difference.
And it's just about like closing a door, isn't it?
Yes, sir, it really is.
The Dale Operating Company is the first in the area to start wrapping its rigs in protective noise barriers.
To make it simple, there are basically two parts to it. The outer part is going to absorb the sound, the inner part is going to block the sound.
The company draped special noise-reducing blankets around the drilling platform itself, and also built a sixteen-foot-tall wall of blankets. Result? A drop from nearly ninety-four decibels inside to under sixty decibels outside. That's about the same noise level as a nearby park, and far quieter than a downtown street. A new city ordinance requires six hundred feet between rigs and homes. At this distance with those barriers in place, noise at least should no longer be a big concern. Live in Fort Worth, Jim Douglas, Channel Eight News.
And additionally, lights is another major concern. In this area, I really don't think we're going to have that problem. The nearest structure is eight hundred and forty-three feet, but we will direct the, the lights downward and inward to the extent possible so that we provide no glare on the adjacent rightaways or buildings. Another question we often receive is how are you going to get water to drill these wells? And what we plan to do on this particular site is drill water wells. And we will use the water from the wells throughout our drilling completion operations, and then that water will also be used for irrigation of the landscaping and trees that we plan around the site. Safety is a very important aspect, as well as the environment. During drilling operations, we will have a closed-loop system. Although your ordinance allows for open mud pits, all of our urban drill site locations are contained in these closed-loop systems. Additionally, due to the proximity of nearby Fossil Creek, during pad site, pad site construction, we'll actually be building a ditch or a berm around our pad site just in case there's any leakage from any diesel trucks or anything to avoid any contamination to the nearby creek. And then, pursuant, the tanks you see there at the bottom, that's a, a wall under construction. We're required by the state of Texas to build a containment wall. And then, as the city engineer addressed earlier, prior to getting approved for a drill site, we've got to get, make the city part of our insurance policy, as well as provide a fifty thousand dollar per-well letter of credit to the city. And then, we also enter into what's called a road repair agreement with the city, and that will help pay along the transportation route, and whereby we agree to restore any damages that we make to the public rightaways. Thank you, and that's, I've got a team here to address any questions or concerns, and I appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barcia. Any, any questions for Ms. Barcia? Thank you. Having had the presentation and from, from the staff and from the applicant, I'll open the public hearing now for any comments or questions from the public. Does anyone want to come forward? Yes, please come up and identify yourself.
Mayor and city council, my name is Stephen Barnes. I office at twelve seven twenty Hillcrest Road in Dallas, Texas. And I represent the partnership that owns the hundred and eighty acres that this drilling site is located on. We purchased this hundred and eighty acres originally to look at, to do a multi-use or multi-residential development on about a hundred and twenty acres. On the remaining sixty, which is on the east side closest to three seventy-seven and where this drill site is, we've been looking at this gas opportunity ever since we got involved. We're excited about being the city, in Haltem City, and we were concerned about the final condition of this gas development when we got involved. And so, we interviewed about five different drilling companies. And after meeting Larry Dale and his team and his company and looking at their record, we decided he was the best one for us. He's the best interurban developer, gas developer, is most considerate, very, the, the safety record speaks for itself, and he's very successful at what he does. This is a great opportunity for the city. We hope to be working with y'all very quickly on the park system, as I understand that the city owns the minerals underneath the parks in this area. And the presentation, I thought, was excellent and very indicative of what they're able to do. So, we look forward to drilling very soon.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. Any, any well nouths want to speak on, Mr. Lewis?
Mr. Mayor, council, and fellow citizens. It's very interesting, I didn't know about this till tonight, but I was reading an article in the Star Program a couple of weeks ago, and I read and studied the whole thing, and then I, we get a letter through the mail of plans to drill pretty close to our home, and man, I say get with it. Our city has been blessed for sitting on the Barnett Shale. We need to take advantage of it. The city has already received royalties, and hopefully, a lot of the citizens, these citizens over in Fort Worth that are receiving royalties on the land under, in the little blue collar area, if you will. So, I think it's a wonderful opportunity for Haltem City to take advantage of this. I'm familiar with this area, and I've been up there a lot when they were flooding, back when we were mayor. And it's rugged, but man, I look forward to a beautiful site, which we just saw here in this area, and I think it will benefit the proper genre. We talked about lights and sounds, and we're thankful for the company for taking care of this, and I agree with the gentleman that just spoke. They're very concerned seemingly from what I've seen in our neighborhood. And so, I appreciate the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Board on this, and hopefully, you folks will consider it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comments? Please come forward and identify yourself. Thank you.
I'm Terry Black, and my office address is fifty-five forty Huddleston Street. Our family owns White Creek Estates, which is the mobile home community there that, that Huddleston Street runs down through. We, we also met, had favorable meetings with the Dale Resource Company, and upon lengthy conversation with them about, you know, access into the, into the property to, to the drill site and so forth, we're convinced that this, that these people will do the right thing. White Creek Estates has been open over twenty-one years, and we, our family does not want to do anything to jeopardize the quality of life that those people have there. I've been there the whole twenty-one years, and those people are like family to me, and, and we wouldn't do anything to, that we felt like would be, as I said, detrimental or harmful to them in respect to, to the drilling itself. And there will be some inconvenience along Huddleston Street. I don't know that the question was ever actually answered. As far as I know, the drill time is approximately thirty days. Is that correct? Okay. So, you know, we're not talking about a real long period of time there that this excess traffic would be up and down White Creek Drive there and, and Huddleston. Our office is right at that intersection of White Creek Drive and Huddleston, so I'm as concerned about that from a economic standpoint as anyone. So, we are certainly in favor of, of the council approving this request. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Black. Any other comments from the public regarding this, this item? Please come forward and identify yourself.
Hello, my name is Dan Robinson. I live at fifty-five hundred Huddleston Road. I wanted to ask about the road. They say the, that Dale says they will repair the roads, but, because I'm the last house in there, and I'm going to be the first one, or closest one to the drill rig, as I believe somebody said, of like eight hundred and forty-six feet. I, if I could get a map of where that's going to be. I'm concerned about all the wildlife in that, in that field. There's a bunch of wildlife, coyotes, skunks, raccoons. They already visit my house, okay, and the house across the street. And I'm wondering when that drill rig goes in there, what's going to happen to all that wildlife? Is somebody going to catch all this wildlife, or are they just going to come up in people's houses and start making a house under theirs? You know, and right outside my street is about approximately maybe thirty-five foot from my trailer to where the city, the street is, okay? And there's a main water line right there and gas line too. And I, I used to drive truck myself, so I know it's going to be heavy, but is there going to be some kind of platform or something to stop from crushing that water line and gas lines? That's another question I have. As far as noise, I mean, you know, I know trucks make noise, and, because it's going to bounce off the trailers, but as y'all said, the traffic going to be limited there, and I was just concerned about, is anybody really going to be watching these trucks speed, or, you know, somebody, they're going to just make their own, if something, you know, because the security's going to be sitting right outside my house, I reckon. So, that's another thing I had, you know, I wanted to brought in, to bring into favor here. So, these are things I'm concerned about, and if anybody could talk to me, I mean, there's a gentleman over here said that he's going to notify everybody in our trailer park about this happening. Well, I've spoke to several of the neighbors around there, and they, nobody's even heard about it except for what they read in the paper. And I've picked up a little bit of slack, because the fact is I went around informing people. So, a little bit of conflict's come down on me for that. And if this man had done what he said he would do, nobody would have ever heard from me. But I was just wondering, is anybody going to be informed about it now? Or do I have to wait to find out this meeting, whether or not it's been passed? Because it's, you know, I just got neighbors, you know, they're curious, and they, they want to know about that drill with, coming in. And I'm sure they're going to ask me. But I, like I said, I've already caught conflict on it, and I'll keep that, you know, who that was, I'll keep that private. But I don't want to get no more conflict. But all I want to know is some answers here, you know, what's going to happen with wildlife? Are the streets going to be fixed immediately or after the drill wells gone, or, you know, it's going to be six months from now? Because I just moved away from what, where a gas well was. And by no means was it quiet, no mean was it dark. And, you know, the streets, they're still to this day, two years ago, they're still tore up, because they did not do what they said they was going to do. Now, maybe this did. Now, maybe this Dale company is different. Maybe they're a different drill that will do it. That's all I'm hoping for, because I, I can understand this gas well will be a good thing. And it is going to cause a lot of inconvenience, and, you know, that's, I just want to be concerned about where I live, I think, I feel like I live in the country right now, because this, ain't nothing there, out there on that field except for old willer trees, you know, mesquite trees. But putting some new trees in there, that'd be wonderful. But the fact is, that wildlife has got to go somewhere, and that's what I'm worried about, because, you know, I'll be looking for the wildlife, you know, I'm going to have to get me an animal trap, start catching them unless somebody's going to take care of it. All right, folks, I appreciate it very much from you hearing from me, and let you know what one of the residents right there is worried about. Thank you all very much.
Thanks, sir. Number of questions there. Mr. Howell, could you possibly address the street issue again? Maybe clarify that.
Yes, sir, Mayor and Council. Like we said earlier, there's a letter of credit and a road bond agreement that Dale Operating has provided to the city, where the city can draw funds from those to pay for any damages done, whether it's for the street, for any utility lines, or anything else that's damaged in our right-of-way. The city will get the work done. I'm sure Dale will repair it as soon as possible, and if not, then the city will go ahead and do it, and then charge Dale. In our ordinance, we have the ability to charge 1.25 times our actual cost. So it behooves Dale to do it at their own cost instead of our, our costs.
So the incentives are in place?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Holton, did you have a question or a comment?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. This was actually one of the points the citizen just brought up. I think he made comment that one of the representatives from, from Dale had, had spoken at the P&amp;Z meeting in regards to notifying everyone, being on top of communication. And I think there's a little confusion there. James, you may want to take over any moment, but I believe the reason the communication process may have not began with those tenants in that area was because the permit hasn't been obtained yet. Is that correct?
That is correct. The, the 200, the 200-foot notices go to the property owner, the Terrance Appraisal District property owners. So that would be the Blacks', and you heard from one of the Blacks' tonight. And like he said, they've owned the property for quite some time. Dale, at this time, doesn't, Dale Resources does not have a legal right to notify. It could be presumed, then, that they have already received the nod to go forward, and we wouldn't want that at this time. So, again, we would have to have relied on the Black family notifying the tenants of that if they should chose to do so, but you, but we also advertise in the paper on these hearings as well, so that the general public can know about it.
Thank you, James. I just wanted to make it clear to the citizens that may have heard his comments, that they can expect. From my understanding, they can expect a great amount of communication from, from Dale regarding these matters. They just have a certain process that they have to go through in order to do that legally. So, thanks, James.
Yes, sir, and it's, and as over inspections and code enforcement, we will also rely on the tenants or anybody in that area to notify the city or my department if they have any problems as well. Yes, sir.
Bennett, the, the gentleman also made reference to a water line. Is there a concern about the water line?
And gas line.
And a gas line? Okay.
No, we've, we've taken a look at everything, and the way that Dale is going to operate and design the transitions between the existing road and their construction road, there should not be an issue. But if it becomes an issue, then Dale will repair it.
Thank you, Bennett. Mr. Sutton?
Yeah, just, one of the other questions that was raised was the timing of the repairs for the road, whether that was going to take place. And, and I guess to set you up, Bennett, is that if, if a damage happens to a road and you repair it the next day, and then a week later, it's broken again by the truck, that seems like that would, like that would be pretty expensive for everybody. So what, what is the actual timing? Is it after the 30 days after all the heavy drilling is done? Is that's when the repairs are affected, if any?
Well, it would depend on how, what the damage is. If it's just like cracked asphalt or something like that, then that would be done after the drilling is done. But if it's a major collapse or something that becomes a safety issue, then that has to be repaired right then.
Okay.
So it depends on the degree of the damage.
Now, if it's cracks in the asphalt, how long after the 30-day drilling is, will that normally be addressed?
Usually, that can be addressed in a matter of weeks after the drilling.
Matter of weeks?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. The gentleman also mentioned wildlife and concern that they may be coming up into their yards. Do they need to call animal control? How do they need to handle that if they start having the wildlife come up onto their personal property?
Probably, yeah, animal control, just like with any new home development or anything like that, animal control.
Animal control? I have a couple of more questions, too. They mentioned that it would be about, Mr. Black mentioned that it would be 30 days for a well. Is there only one well, or are there multiple wells?
Probably drill multiple wells to begin with, two wells to begin with, and then later come back and drill additional wells and production equipment.
Okay, she said, because the, the camera or the voice probably didn't pick it up, that there would be multiple wells, probably two wells to begin with, and then additional wells as opportunity presented itself. So is that 30 days per well, or would you drill two at the same time during that 30 days?
It would be 30 days per well.
30 days per well. So initially, it could be 60 days that, that the equipment will be going, now, will the equipment go up and down the roads during this 60-day period, or is that a 30-day period?
I'd like to direct that to David.
Okay.
You could, you could come to the mic.
Could David, would you mind coming to the microphone, and then I won't feel like a parrot repeating everything?
And James, if, and James, if you could be ready to, to address the number of wells that can go there.
And then I have one more question after, that was brought up by one of the comments.
When, when we first move into rig up, it usually takes us, usually about two, upwards to three days to move all the equipment in, rig up, and begin drilling. Once we are done with the first well, we'll simply lay the derrick down, scoot it over, and we can do that within a day. And then the same process, once we're done with the second well, it usually takes us about two to three days to take it down and truck it out.
Okay. That, that's, I just wanted to be sure for those that were listening, because I understood that there were going to be multiple wells. I cheated and knew that ahead of time. He had 30 days, so I wanted everyone to understand that it's 30 days per well, so it's 60 days up and down the highway. One other question, which may be Bennett's, but don't go away, or it may be James. Mr. Barnes mentioned, I think, floodplain at, at one time. The year that it decides to be in the floodplain down there, is the well secure? Is everything okay if we have big storms in the spring and it decides to flood down there? Okay, I'm dreaming about the storms, but for the sake of conversation, and an informed decision.
I'll put it this way. It is in the floodway, or floodplain, it is a floodplain, and they have hired, Dale Resources hired engineering to, and modeling on their drill site. And what they showed was, even with a 100-year flood, everything on the site will be okay, and it would not sustain. The location of the equipment, all the tanks and everything. Grounded, so that they don't float or anything like that. But that's, that's a daily operation for, for Dale Resources, and it's, it's nothing new to them.
Well, I presume that floodplanes are pretty commonplace to drill wells anyway?
Yes.
From around here, anyway. Okay, I just wanted to be sure that for those people that live along the creeks and they hear that something's in a floodplain, that they, they understood that security is in place and that we're not going to have bad things entering into our water. One other question, I think this was James, do they, they mentioned they're going to drill water wells, which I think that's great for irrigation. Too many times, we have landscaping put in and there's no irrigation to water it. So is there a permitting process?
Those are permitted in this district, and no, at this time, the city does not have a permitting process, but working into that.
Okay. I think I'm through with questions for this round.
James, can you, the number of well, this CUP permit is addressing these 3.18 acres.
That is correct.
Is that correct? So they can put as many wells as they want in this 3.18 acres?
And specific. The plan indicates the exact area that is, will become CUP or a special use for that area.
And go beyond that, they're going to trigger a new permitting process.
And indicates the exact area that is, will become CUP or a special use for that area.
And go beyond that, they're going to trigger a new permitting process.
Absolutely. Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. That's, we're still in the public hearing. Oh, Mr. Sutton, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just had a bizarre thought, and I just wanted to ask it while I was thinking about it, but they're digging water, a water well. Is there anything saying that they couldn't provide that water well to residents? I mean, the, the, what is that water?
No, no, sir. It's, the ordinances are very specific that, that you can't cross-contaminate the city's system with the pot system.
I see.
Yes, sir. So you, it is very, it must remain separate.
I see. Okay. All right.
I'm sure we didn't address all your questions. There's, you had several. What, is there anything we didn't address?
I believe you covered all of them right now, because other than that main sewer line, it's a sewer line and there's a gas line, and it's already sticking above it. I just know that when them trucks run over, they're so heavy, they're going to crush it.
Well, we're, we're going to be, well, we're going to, we're going to be keeping an eye on it and seeing what we can do about it.
Mr. Hutchinson?
I would, I would like to petition, Mr. Black, if you would ensure that, that your residents there, those who own those mobile homes, would all know that what's going to go on in that area, at least communicate with them and stay in communication with them. You've seen, you've heard from the city what we're prepared to do. You've heard from Dale what they're prepared to do, and I want, I would, you know, just ask you to make sure that the residents continue to know that, too. We obviously have a website, sir, and they will keep you abreast of what's going on, but Mr. Black is the owner of that, of that addition, and he needs to, and so I would petition that you would do that, too, Mr. Black, okay?
Absolutely, I will. Mayor?
Yes.
There's one thing to keep in mind is they, Dale Resources, this is not the drilling permit. They still have to go through the whole drilling process, permit process. And a part of that process is a note, public notification. There will be notification in the newspaper and signs placed in the area. So there will still be another round of notifications.
I know, but that, that goes to Mr. Black.